It's time.
Mr. Chair. Shall we get started?
Yes.
We have a quorum. We're all here, it's more than a quorum.
It's a...
We'll go ahead and thank you all for attending this evening. First item on our agenda is review and approval of the minutes from the last meeting. If anybody's got any additions or corrections, if you'd be kind enough to share them. Motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 To oppose. I believe we have approved the minutes, thank you. Before we jump into the agenda this evening, and forgive me, I don't have a graceful way of saying this, we have typically gone through the process of electing a chair for the year. Is that a process we need to review? I am happy to continue to fill that role, but I'm also very happy to allow someone else to fill it up if they're so interested.
I'm happy with Tom.
Tom.
You do a great job. I appreciate it.
Not an exception, I think that's a motion and a second for another term.
Absolutely.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen, as always, I'm very pleased.
Pull your mic down. Pull the mic down in between you guys.
Do a vice chair too?
You should.
Yeah.
He says we should do a vice chair too.
You do, you should have a vice chair.
In case you ever want to, you know, go on vacation.
Or if you're not there, right? I'm speaking for the...
Part of the job is great. Well, I...
I think you could just appoint a vice chair maybe.
There you go, I was gonna say, I'd appoint the guy at the head of the table.
Who's been there the longest?
Dwayne Burden.
Lonnie's got the most experience with doing things.
I think Dwayne Burden fits the bill completely.
Uh, Dwayne, do you have a problem filling that role in my house?
That's fine, yeah.
They're always on vacation at the same time together though.
Next up this evening, gentlemen, discussion on zoning code issues. You had a few things you wanted to bring to our attention, sir?
Well, I mean, I think Brad's gonna talk about a few things tonight too, but, and I know you had seen that, I'll just pass that around, I mean, I think this was, the discussion we had at our previous meeting was about the process that we followed for the repeal, revoke, and, you know, new variants. And, you know, I had generated some language, and I did send that to you, Tom. You had said, "Go ahead, send it on to Brad." You know, it was language I had seen, and I'd kind of revised it a little bit to our situation, but I know Brad had a few updates, few changes to that, but I think we wanted to just sort of flesh that out tonight if we could. There's another copy for that side there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and Tim, if I could just kind of highlight, I took that content that you provided, and I plugged it into where those changes would be in the code. But maybe just for a little context, so we had the variance issue last month where a variance was approved in 2016 or so that had a condition, that condition wasn't satisfied, and the project was built anyway. And in the process of the city going through and looking at various conditional use permits and variances and checking conditions, they found this one had never been satisfied. So they, and correct me if I misstate this, but they spoke to the property owner. The property owner then went to rectify the issue and started to figure out, "How do I install that condition?" And everyone determined that condition wasn't applicable or necessary. And the property owner next door, who was most impacted, said, "You know, I don't believe it's necessary either, it doesn't bother me, and there's no impact." And so, the issue then became, "We have a variance with a condition that's not practical or necessary, what do we do?" In all the years of planning that I've been through, over 20-plus, I've never had a situation where a variance was requested to be amended or revoked for this purpose. A few of my colleagues actually have been through situations where variances were revoked. And so after talking, rather than amending the variance, we felt it was more prudent to simply rescind that variance and reissue it as it should be, so that you don't have a variance with a condition, and then later on, an amendment that gets recorded. So we proceeded down that path, we put the staff report together. A resident in the city said, you know, "There's nothing in the code that enables you to do that." And so they basically questioned our approach. We consulted with the city attorney, I consulted with a number of other attorneys that I work with just in casual conversations. And the big difference is that, in this particular case, the property owner requested something to be changed on it, and ultimately, through our conversations, requested to rescind and establish new. And so because the property owner was requesting that we rescind that vested property right, and it's not the city saying we're going to remove it, that was a legal or a statutory practice that would not be questioned and that would be acceptable. Even though our codes are silent on it, it is a practice that everyone felt was the right approach to take. So we were still questioned on that by the resident, and rather than simply leaving things the way they are, even though it's highly unlikely we'll be faced with this again, it was decided we should try to address the code amendments. Tim did some research and put together the language I think that he was passing around, and that language, a lot of that language will work, and I plugged it into the code in a couple different places. But the one thing that we have to be careful about not combining is the, how we treat variances versus conditional use permits, because they're quite different, and statutorily, they're different. You cannot grant a variance for a use, and so we cannot put restrictions or conditions on a variance for revocation that's use-based. But a conditional use permit, we can. So what I've done is I've gone into the zoning code and looked at it from a standpoint of, "Where can we make it clear that the idea of revocation or amending a variance is acceptable?" Statutorily, it is, so know that we did the right thing. And so we've looked at the code, section 1520224 is where we talk about variances. We simply said, "Let's add a letter there, G, called Revocation and Amendment, that simply states the council in its capacity as the Board of Adjustments and Appeals is consistent with authority granted by law, may grant a property owner a revocation or an amendment to an existing variance following the processes outlined in section 1520224." So basically, if someone wants to revoke or amend their variance, they can apply to the city, and we go through the same planning commission, public hearing, council approval. So that was all we need to make sure that it's clear that we can revoke or amend a variance. Then, the next part of this is, there's a couple other little places where we want to add variances. So this one, this 152, 1540235, add a variance, that's the enforcement section. So the enforcement section talks about if there's a condition that's not being met, that the city has the right to revoke. And so, in this particular case, that provision, as it's stated today, references conditional use permits and zoning amendments and doesn't reference variances. And so in this case, if a condition is not being met and not being satisfied, the city may revoke that variance. And that is statutorily, you know, a supportive action by the city. So if you're not adhering to the conditions outlined in the variance at any point in time, the city could take action to revoke that. You would have a planning commission public hearing and a council action, so it doesn't automatically happen, you have to take action to do it. So we simply added that variance is one of the elements that you would potentially revoke.
So that's revocation of the whole?
That's revocation of the variance, right. So in here, I think, if I can find where that does, so here's the section of the code where we would add G and talk about the idea of amending or revoking a variance at the applicant's request. And then, I can't read this, but I think this is the section then where revocation, you can't really see that very well, but let me see if I can blow it up. Says instead of, in addition to any of the remedies, blah, 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 "Conditions of a conditional use permit or the ordinances of the city," and I simply added a variance. So if you're not adhering to the conditions of a conditional use permit, the conditions of a variance, or other ordinances of the city, the city may revoke, going through the proceedings as outlined in the code. So those two simple things makes it clear that the city has the authority to revoke or amend a code if you're not following the conditions, and that an applicant also has the authority to request that the city consider amending or revoking a variance. That's their vested right. Any questions on that? I did work through this generally with the attorney, I will have them review this before we do the final one, if the city says, "Let's move forward on this." Like I said, I don't think there's any concern about going quickly with this, simply because it's very rare that this happens, but it's one of those things that we probably should go ahead and clean up. So then, Tim had pointed out some other language, and in reviewing that other language, I think there's some good components to that that we should think about as well. These are the different points in that email that he was sending around, I'll just highlight some of these. What these are talking about is, under what findings would we consider revoking a conditional use permit? Now, I'm not talking about a variance necessarily, but a conditional use where the use is the issue, not necessarily a site design, or a height, or a mast. But I think these conditions, these are not in our current zoning code for the most part, there's a couple that kind of are, but I think if we're gonna do that variance change, we should just go ahead and do this too. But this clearly spells out that if a conditional use permit was obtained by fraud, if the use or activity permanently ceases to exist, and this is something that a lot of cities, you know, don't do, a conditional use permit is granted, and that conditional use permit runs with the property. And the use may cease to exist, and often, cities will not follow up on that and say, "Oh, now that the use is gone, let's take away the conditional use permit." So this is saying, if the use ceased to exist by any of these actions, demolition, alteration, subsequent use of the space, or similar conditions, something changes, then you could have a conversation and possibly revoke that conditional use permit. The user activity has been suspended or dormant no longer than 12 months. Now, we do see that one occasionally in city codes, and Tim, I don't know if you pulled this from another code somewhere, so maybe...
No, I reviewed a number of different ones.
Yeah, okay.
Tried to find the best one that I was looking at.
So that 12-month period is a common one, and cities will often do annual reviews of conditional use permits to make sure that their conditions are being adhered to, and that might be what kind of triggered the variance and other things. A lot of cities want to go away from conditional use permits, because that's a lot of staff work to go out and review these on a regular basis, but they're there for that reason. And there's some exceptions or provisions there if somebody's in the process of either selling their property or doing some improvements to it. Primitive variance granted is being or recently has been found to be contrary to the terms of the conditions. We already have that one in there, just in a little different language, but if the conditions are not being adhered to, then that's one of the reasons to revoke it. Circumstances under which the permit was granted have been changed by the owner or operator to such degree that one or more of the findings, and that's, again, I think we kind of have that one in there, but this one's more clear that if something changes on the site that makes them not compliant with the conditions. Or the last one there, if the conditions, let's say that they get the conditional use permit, the conditions are in place, and they're operating, but we have a health, or welfare, or safety issue, that those conditions didn't work the way we all had hoped they would. I'm not sure about that one, we'll do a little...
Well, and I wanted to sort of include that, partly because I thought that would be one where, that would kind of been where Domino's fell. You know, after the fact, we said, "Well, we thought this would be a good fix, with screening and all that sort of thing." And then, you know, he came to us and said, "Well, you know, the contractor said it could fall off, and, you know, you could at least made the argument that it might be a public safety risk, and that would cover us in that case."
Sure.
Whereas otherwise, you might not have been able to justify that, you know. So that's kind of why I threw that in there, you know, sometimes we think it sounds really good on paper, and then after the fact, you're like, "Well, that actually was a terrible idea."
Yeah.
It created runoff, or it created, you know, we told them to put rock down, and it created a mess, or something like that. So that does kind of cover a number of things, but, I mean, if that's where you're going, if you thought it was too broad, maybe, I don't know.
I don't know, that's the only one that I haven't seen one like that, so I just want to make sure we're not...
Sure.
...overstepping boundaries. And again, these are things that I would have the city attorney review and say, "Do any of these, if we act on any of these, put us at any liability." But generally, I think these are good things to add, and I would add them to the conditional use permit section. Again, not to variance, because we're not talking about use with a variance. Any questions on that?
Variants is recorded at the county, correct?
Variances and conditional use permits, best practice is that they get recorded at the county on the title.
And if we revoke a variance, do we go a process in place by which we notify the county?
It still gets recorded.
Yeah, that resolution, you would act a resolution to revoke the variance, that resolution gets recorded, so then someone's going through a title work, they see variance, document whatever revoked, new variance. Any questions on any of those? To me, these are kind of simple administrative things we need to do to clean up, and we would still do a public hearing and amend the zoning code as such.
So variances kind of come through the state law, right?
So... Yes, there is statutory language about variances.
So, and that's why it's sort of been difficult to do amendments and rescind them in the past? Is that right, or...
Um, it's not clear, it's still... So, like, if you call the League of Minnesota Cities and you ask them about revoking or amending a variance, they'll say, "Well, I don't know." Because there's not clear statutory language that says you can or can't do that. And so they revolt, they revolt, they go back to the fact that a variance is a vested property right. And so, how do you take away a vested property right? What is clear is if you grant a variance, and you have conditions that are reasonable and lawful conditions attached to that, and they're not abiding by those conditions, then you have the right as a governing authority to revoke it, because they're not meeting those conditions. But if there aren't conditions, which often cities will grant a variance, and they won't put any conditions on it, those are very difficult, if not, it's just not gonna happen, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to revoke it. So if there's not an aggredence or a violation of that variance, you can't take away that vested property right. Now, as a property owner, I can voluntarily give up that property right. And that's what we have with Domino's, because they gave up that property right so long as they got revised property rights. Now, if you would have not approved the revised property right, they would have kept that existing property right. Then we would have had to deal with, how do we, how do we rectify this?
Sure.
So if there are no questions about this, I think this is one that we would work towards making an amendment to the zoning code, whether we do it at the next public hearing or not, I think is, you know, we can have that conversation.
Yeah, looks good, thank you for the work.
All right, any other questions or comments on that?
Good.
Okay.
Drive-throughs in downtown?
The next one. This one came up because of the former Hy-Vee Pharmacy, well, I think it wasn't Hy-Vee Pharmacy, what was it?
The Hy-Vee Pharmacy.
Hy-Vee Pharmacy. That existed downtown, then Hy-Vee left a new business, and I think their property owners are here that are interested in that business. And planning commissioner Colin here has, is working for them, so what we want to talk about here is not necessarily that project, but I'm gonna just give you the context of why we're dealing with it now, which happens to be because of that project. And so we want to talk more globally, policy-wise, about drive-throughs in the downtown. So let me give you the, kind of the backdrop to this. At some point in time, the zoning code may have allowed for drive-throughs in downtown as of right, I don't know that for sure. The last zoning code, before we updated the one we have now, allowed for drive-throughs in the downtown with a conditional use permit. And it's our understanding that this particular property did not have, does not have a conditional use permit at this time. So at some point in time, there must have been a code that allowed a drive-through, we just haven't gone back and looked at the process behind it. In the last zoning code, we said, "Okay, drive-throughs will be allowed through conditional use permit," which allows us to put certain conditions on the operations of drive-throughs. This most recent zoning code update, I don't know that you had a long conversation, I talked to my colleague Laura, and asked, you know, "Did they have a big discussion about it?" She said, "No, not really, we mentioned it and kind of moved on." So this zoning code update prohibits drive-throughs in the downtown. So you might think, "Well, gee, that's pretty restrictive." The trend has been in, in kind of these districts which are more downtown-like, or downtowns in and of themselves, in some big communities, they're going as far as saying across the whole city, to greatly restrict or prohibit drive-throughs. In a downtown setting, they add automobile traffic to a limited benefit to the downtown district, it's a drive-through, you drive in, you drive out. And in the downtown setting, most people, from a downtown perspective, are wanting to see more vibrancy. And part of that is, if you're gonna come downtown, you shop at more than just one place, and you're getting out of your vehicle, it creates a more safer environment, it creates an environment where people are there, and it's just more activity. And so a lot of cities have gone through the process to say, you know, "We don't want drive-throughs in the downtown, maybe on the edges, or more likely in some of the highway commercial uses." And so I can only surmise that that's why we went this path of saying no drive-throughs in the C1 downtown district. The other reason for it, if you look at all the research at a national level, there's a movement to ban the construction of drive-through windows in an attempt to curb vehicle emissions, so there's a pollution standpoint behind it, reduce litter, a lot of things are thrown out of car windows, and trash cans overflow, improve pedestrian safety, that's the biggest one in my mind, because when you have a lot of traffic, people coming in to get their goods through a window and driving out, they're not thinking about the pedestrian environment. And as a way to also help fight obesity, so there's a health and all this, a lot of drive-throughs are attached to fast food, that's not the case that we have here. So, let me talk a little about the design section. The question that we have in front of you today, and that was my next slide, I think, is, do we allow drive-throughs in any capacity in the downtown district, either permitted with standards, or permitted via conditional use permit, like it was? And if so, what are the critical standards we should incorporate? And so that's really the question we want to have a discussion with you today on, is in what capacity do we, if we do at all, allow for drive-throughs? So some of the things we have to look at, and many of these things are already identified in the zoning code and the standards, and they provide some basis for standards, many of these are not spelled out specifically. Things like stacking, and stacking is really critical, because when cars come to a window or a menu board, an electronic device where you order and you see the menu board, you want to make sure that there's enough room for vehicles to stack up behind it. How many vehicles, one, two, three, four, five, six? Well, honestly, it depends on how popular the use is. The common number we see is three. Is there any magic to that number? There's probably some scientific traffic engineering study that says three, you know, is the right distance. But in my experience, it's based on the popularity, the more popular it is, and coffee shops are a great one, where in the morning, people need their coffee, and they're gonna sit and wait until they get through, and they don't care how far back they go. So what happens? Well, they back up into places where people are trying to access parking, they back up across the sidewalk where people are gonna walk, in the most worst cases, they back up into the street, and then all of a sudden, you're impeding traffic flow. So we have to be cautious about what's the right stacking distance for both the window itself, as well as the order menu board and microphone. Traffic vehicular, in the code, we currently have standards for that, and we have a general description about making sure that it doesn't create additional traffic that can't be handled by the existing system that's there. So if there's streets, you know, what's the volume of those streets? What's the projected volume of those streets, and will this new facility, you know, go over that projected volume for them to safely operate? That typically requires a traffic study. So your city engineer would get out there, would look at counts, they would look at capacity of the streets, they would do some traffic counts, they would say, "Are the turn movements good, is ingress egress to the site good, et cetera." Pedestrian realm impacts, that's also addressed in the code, it says, "We don't want to create an unsafe pedestrian environment." And that gives us the ability to provide conditions or design criteria to make sure we protect that pedestrian realm. Things that are not addressed specifically in the zoning code are noise. So if you add a menu, or a microphone and a speaker to order, that's gonna generate a certain noise, so we want to think about how we attenuate noise, or we mitigate that noise, especially if you're adjacent to a residential district. And then light, light is a big one that's often become an issue, and it's not just the light from the menu boards or other, but it's also headlights. Early morning, people getting coffee, where are those lights shining? And we have to be conscious of that. So there's often gonna be additional screening or some kind of attenuation for noise and light. We don't have those in the code right now, those are additional standards we might think about. We have a provision in the code right now that talks about architecture, it literally just says, "The canopy to the drive-through must match the architecture of the building." But we need to think also about the menu board, what's it look like, how does it fit in or not fit in with the site? If there are other features as part of that drive-through, often people will start putting other features in the drive-through, so if you come to the drive-through, you're really busy, and you need to move people through, you might have a place for people to park separately, so there might be other parking aisles...
And the culvers too, huh?
Signs, yeah. Signage is often a thing associated with these drive-throughs. Design, number of lanes, dimensions, parking impacts, curb cuts, et cetera, all those things are kind of addressed in the current code, but things that we would want to be aware of. So all of these things, if we talk about allowing drive-throughs in downtown, are things worth conversation, we can have certain standards in that downtown district that tries to address this. We had the draft of the zoning code before the pandemic hit. And I will tell you that everybody was moving down this path of prohibiting drive-throughs, you're not the only city that was doing this. COVID hit, pandemic hit, and about four to six months into the pandemic, we were starting to get hit with, "Hey, we need to loosen up at least temporarily our standards." And we're talking about things like walk-up and drive-up windows, or grab-and-go, you know, so we need parking spaces now where someone can park in front of a restaurant, restaurant can bring the food out, and then they can leave. So not necessarily a drive-through window, but that parking. So those are things that aren't addressed in the city code, and things that we could look at. I don't know if you've had demands for the walk-up windows or the drive-up windows, often they don't allow walk-up through a drive-through. So that kind of frames up the issue, we have a request, as I mentioned, from a property owner who's looking at trying to improve the drive-through, if you will, for the building where the Hy-Vee Pharmacy was. There's a number of other issues that they have to move through, they're from a design standpoint. But the first one that we have to deal with is, how do we permit this use in the downtown? Now, in their particular case, it could be looked at as an existing non-conformity, however, there's no conditional use permit, so there's no real basis to judge it by, and therefore, we look at it and say, "Are they increasing the degree of non-conformity?" They're going from a pharmacy to a coffee shop, and the trip production from a pharmacy drive-through to a coffee shop drive-through is quite significantly higher, significantly higher, and they're also making some improvements by adding a menu board and a microphone. So those things increase the degree of non-conformity, from a planning perspective, we wouldn't allow that. So that's where we're at now. And so the first question is, should we be talking about allowing drive-throughs in some capacity in the downtown? And we, talking with staff, we felt it would be best to have a policy discussion with you now, and then we can come back with any kind of amendments, if you feel that's the prudent direction to go. They do have some alternatives, I can't guarantee that those alternatives are better than amending the code at this point, so I thought we could start with that conversation. Did I miss anything, Linda?
I think that was pretty thoroughly laid out.
Okay, I wanna start. Being the police aren't here, I'm gonna ask you, because you respond to accidents, that kind of thing, has there ever been an issue with a pedestrian hit down by Mayo Clinic and the drugstore when it was in operation? Okay. The thing, I myself don't want to restrict drive-throughs, I can't believe Hy-Vee didn't have a drive-through for the new drugstore at the Lerdman store, just for the fact that older people like to go through the drive-through rather than walk in, and with the COVID thing, that's compounded it even more. I don't want to go into, or Hy-Vee, walk all the way through the store just to get to the drugstore, when if they had a drive-through, I could have got it right away. With the COVID thing, I think it's taught everybody that drive-throughs saved a lot of businesses. I do not want to restrict, and I understand the traffic, people getting parked right out into the street, those kind of issues, but I think we've learned our lesson that we need to allow drive-throughs, because there will be more, and if this happens again, it'll even be worse. So somehow, we need to allow, even with restrictions as for lighting, noise, that kind of thing, if we can still somehow allow drive-throughs, it's only gonna help our town grow. We have enough trouble bringing in businesses as it is. If we're gonna start restricting or saying that we don't want any drive-throughs, we're slitting our throat. That's my two cents.
Why did you limit it to downtown?
Why did you limit it to downtown? Why is it drive-throughs in downtown as opposed to the entire city? Is it just a traffic-related distinction?
Typically, the, in a downtown setting such as this where you have a number of businesses close together and you have kind of an identity, the desire is that that identity be a place that's comfortable to walk and gather and be outside and granted, there may be have been no pedestrian issues. The more vehicles coming and going from sites along there through curb cuts creates conflict points with people. And so the main reason in downtown is pedestrian walkability. The secondary reason is if people are coming to downtown, the desire is to get people out of their cars so they patronize many businesses and they stay there and they spend money in downtown and that makes the downtown vital. Drive-throughs, you don't get out of your car, you don't have to get out of your car. I don't want to get out of my car. And I understand the Covid side of it, but that's why we typically do it in a downtown setting. So if you look at the code right now, we prohibit it in the C1. Everywhere else, we permit it with standards.
I think that's what the struggle I had was, you know, you want to balance the best practices versus the business community or support for the business community. Because I mean, I think it's clear, it probably doesn't match the best practices, but at the same time, you know, the point that Lonnie made is a good point that, you know, partly I looked at it as a pre-existing use and, you know, it wasn't permitted, you know, they didn't have a CUP for the drive-through. You're absolutely right. If they hadn't had it at all, you know, I would say probably not a good spot to put a drive-through in. But because they did, there's enough issues they have to work through to continue to make that viable, you know, like the property owner themselves that they may have to work with because there is no easement. I mean, people, they just kind of let people do it, you know. So it's a tough one because I can kind of see both sides of it.
It is. And the other thing we have to be aware of and the reason we want to talk about it, not necessarily just isolated to that project, but the rest of the community, to your point, a lot of them could come in and what happens when you have a whole bunch of drive-throughs? And we can't restrict one and let the other one happen, you know, we have to be fair about.
If you look downtown, there's a lot of empty lots. So if like Mooseburger sold his building, there's an empty lot next to him. He could, they could particularly, you know, if they bought that lot, now they can make a drive-through in there. So it's just to, you know, remember, like Brad said, you know, you're not doing it for one property, this is the entire district.
Right, I get that.
And I think there's a delicate balance. So if planning commission said, we want to allow them to happen, let's find that balance. That's what we would work on is what are those design criteria that we would imply?
I just don't want, give me just a second. I just don't want to say we won't. I agree that there needs to be restrictions, there needs to be safety factors, but if the company comes in, says that they want to destroy Mooseburgers because they have a big enough lot to have a drive-through, if they can produce something to do it safely and it draws another business into town to boost taxes, to boost people, even if you drive through Mooseburgers or Taco Bell if it moves there and you need to go to Hy-Vee afterwards, you're still going to get out of your car. I just, I don't want to just say no. Sorry.
No, that's right. I just, a couple, I mean, I know this drive-through went in in 1991 from that standpoint, that was the first drive-through that was ever in town that I know of because that was before Burger King, so. So I know when I design fast food restaurants, every ordinance says how many backup stalls there needs to be per different business. And I don't know if our ordinance says that because I know from a, you know, for like a Burger King and you can look at the present one or the old one, you know, that probably required five to eight backup stalls where no parking is being impeded, no, you know. So I guess my first question would be, does our ordinance talk about different businesses and what can be there? And then, you know, from a standpoint of our downtown, if somebody's going to come there and try to walk from business to business, they need to get into their car and go drive a couple of blocks to get to the next business to a certain extent because there's not a lot of businesses that are all.
Door-to-door.
Door-to-door like there used to be twenty-five years ago.
Back when we were kids.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you could start and go to one to the other and now there's just not that many. So trying to make sure that we keep the downtown vibrant with what can be there, but I think you can almost cover a majority of it if we had something in our ordinance that said these types of coffee shop versus a drugstore versus a drive-through fast, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's so different. I mean, is the Wells Fargo ATM a drive-through? Are the two mailboxes behind the post office a drive-through?
Right.
Another drop-off.
You know, is there a distinction there? I don't know. So I guess it's.
And I'm kind of with you, Lonnie, I think there's got to be a conversation around these things.
Yes.
Especially downtown because you've got limited real estate and a lot of established businesses. I think you've almost got to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Right, because I think eventually Hy-Vee is going to see that they need to move their pharmacy department where they can have a drive-through. And if we say no drive-throughs in town, that's going to mess with them. And I know older people or sick people would use that drive-through non-stop.
That's one of the reasons the pharmacy went in there.
Yes.
So it could have a drive-through.
Yes.
And just to be clear, we're only restricting drive-throughs out of the downtown, so it is allowed in the other two districts.
Right, but is Hy-Vee considered downtown?
Where's Hy-Vee at?
It's in the pink.
It's in a residential. Isn't it lot nineteen right there?
Yeah, nineteen.
What is the light pink?
So, yeah.
It's not transition zone.
Right.
RC. Yeah. What the new nomenclature is.
It is not allowed in the RC district.
Let's be honest, our downtown has been going the wrong direction for quite some time and one could argue that allowing drive-throughs just increases the potential exposure to new business. So I think we need to allow it. I understand the getting out of the car and the wellness and all that stuff, but to what degree do you limit things? I was even kicking around in the brain here as to whether you add some colorful language where you're talking about the downtown deals with zero lot line businesses, you know, where we had businesses right butt up, you know, going door-to-door as to whether you describe that area not allowing drive-throughs.
Sure.
So I think we want to allow it. I know down south even, and we're going to be talking about the liquor store sometime, you know, they got drive-through liquor stores. So I mean, that would certainly increase our exposure with the liquor store and increase the revenue for the city, so.
Yes.
I lived downtown for nine years. What are your feedback tonight?
Well, I agree with Lonnie too on this. You know, we have to, we don't want to impede any businesses, especially the ones if we want some to come in. I guess the one thing, you know, you guys are talking about Mooseburgers, the law office there, the only concern I would have and this could probably be written in there as far as accesses, you know, we don't want to cut up, that would be a horrible thing to have, you know, right there all of a sudden somebody says, I'm going to put a driveway in because they bought the next lot, you know, they buy two lots, turn one in for their drive-through. You know, then you've got a street intersection, drive-through intersection, you know, I think that's something that we need to really.
I would say, you know.
Defining it.
Yeah. Current building is coming, the drive-through is kind of coming off of a side street, so it's.
Right.
Is a little bit different versus coming out of Mooseburgers, you'd be coming right out in the middle of traffic and, you know, I can't.
Far from the old alley.
Right, depending, well, yeah, but you'd have to be coming through the alley to create the backup to then go out and now you're coming out in the middle. Nobody would be expecting somebody to come out there where.
Well, visibility would be restricted too because of parking style.
Right.
And those are covered by a lot of the standards we currently have, so we wouldn't have to do too much there because your traffic visibility and safety, we have a standard in place for that. So really, the only change in the code would be under the RC and the C1 in the table is do we make drive-throughs as permitted with standards and we apply the same standards to them? Or do you make it a conditional use permit? And if we can address those standards that we've talked about, we don't have to go through the CUP process and mess with that, but certainly that's an option.
If Hy-Vee decided they want to put a drive-through and they have enough of their own, they're going to have all the backup, they're not going to be coming out onto a city street or anything, you know, so it's definitely a different layout than any other building.
But they just don't want it worded, you know, even if it is not downtown, you know, if we can somehow put it, some kind of verbiage where it's allowed with provisions or restrictions or, you know, something like that.
Well, so I think that's the question we have tonight. So I mean, that's, and that's what he's got up there.
Right.
Realistically, that's, you know, we don't, we're not going to be taking action on any particular.
No, no, no.
Issue, matter of, and it sounds like for the most part, you know, the planning commission is interested in having this opened up a little bit.
Yep.
And I think, you know, each one of these that would come in, whether it's through a CUP, I mean, you're going to get an opportunity to review those and in some places, it'll work better than others.
Right.
The Mooseburger one, I would recommend against it because it's a bad spot.
Right, yes.
Visibility, it's just not, this one, as I said before, for me, it's like, I know it's probably not the best practice because yeah, you do want people to get out and walk and want to make downtown a destination. At the same time, it was a drive-through, you know, it makes it a little easier for me to envision how this could work. There's still lots of things that have to be figured out.
Yes.
I mean, there are a lot of, but I would want not be an impediment at the outset for a potential business to come in.
Yes.
And that's how I see it from an economic development perspective. I know it's not just planning, but also from the city.
I agree.
We have standards in the code right now that are in here that talks about stacking areas, proximity to residential district. A lot of these are kind of best practices, if you will. This is the six cars per customer service point. Stacking shall be provided for six cars per customer service point and shall comply with all yard requirements.
Yeah, and they'll go along with the stacking as the traffic flow, you know, through that drive-through.
Right, yep.
I mean, to have six cars on your own park, on your own lot.
That's tough in downtown.
And that's where the, yeah, because I mean, if you've got a bunch of cars that are all in your, all in your parking lot and now people want to back up and get out and they can't, you're going to have, you're going to have upset customers who aren't going to keep coming around.
So in the zoning code in downtown, you don't have to provide off-street parking and so they can choose to do that. That's why I was, so the question then becomes, do we have an issue with parking in downtown? And some people we do, some people we don't, but. So this is the traffic and this is the access in and out, ingress egress, this is the architectural canopy side, so I would, I would probably revise these a little bit or add to them to address noise and light. Those are common things that we have and you want to make sure that you address those at the beginning rather than have to deal with them as complaints later. But beyond that, I think those standards are pretty strong. And then it's just a matter of seeing, should it be permitted in the RC? It sounds like the RC should also have it to some capacity.
We know that's coming, so and if we're going to be revising it now, I mean, if Hy-Vee, we're going to stay in that location long-term, they're going to put a drive-through in it somehow.
I would think so.
Put a drive-through and they don't come in and buy everything else they don't need.
Well, that's a good, that's why they put it in the back too long.
That's right.
They're trying to get you a lot of those things.
Lonnie, we're supposed to go buy some more.
We have to make it, Lonnie.
We're not safe tonight.
Good. That is a retail strategy. So I'm hearing to consider allowing it in those districts and working on those standards. So that would be another zoning ordinance amendment we need to move forward.
So how do others, and I'm talking specifically the stacking.
Yep.
How do other communities enforce some of that? Because you can't enforce some of the human nature where, I mean, you talk about Taco Bell, Culvers, all of these, you go through Rochester now during the Covid time and they are stacked clear out into the street. And so how do you police that or how do you set a standard to address something like that?
Well, you exactly go to the mall and the Starbucks right there in the mall, you know, and I mean, that'll be backed up almost to the street, up to the turn, you know.
It kind of comes back to the question I put to the engineer about the roundabout on Main Street. You know, if the train has stopped, you know people are going to load that roundabout up. How does the fire department get out? That was my concern then and it's similar to what you're asking.
So in the case that we have here, enforcement, it's a great question, number one. Because by us doing this, if they're tremendously successful at their business and they have those people waiting and I know people that want a coffee in the morning are going to sit, they don't care where, you're sitting in the street, they're going to sit in the street. In the event that happens, then it becomes a law enforcement issue. So your police department, your public safety department is going to get called, they're going to have to go out and address it and then it becomes an issue with the business. With a conditional use permit, you have a tool. You're not meeting the conditions. We have a condition that very clearly would say, something to the effect of you have to accommodate this much stacking. In the event you go beyond that, then you're in violation of the conditions and we can revoke your conditional use permit and then they're out of business, they can't run. They'd have to close the drive-through. With the standards, then it becomes more of a question mark and becomes more of a nuisance and a public safety issue. And so it becomes a, you're in violation of this section of the code because you're obstructing the street, your business is obstructing the street and therefore they get fined or it becomes a criminal thing. And it's just harder to go through that process than it is, you're in violation of the conditional use permit, therefore you either have to follow it or we revoke the conditional use permit.
But we could adjust that in the future.
Right. I mean, initially, I think we were just taking action to allow it in the code, right, tonight.
Well, that's what he was. If it's permitted with standards.
If it's permitted, so we have, we have two options here.
Other things than a conditional use.
Yep, we have two options. We could say we'll permit it, well, we have three options. We could permit it just outright. We can permit it with standards, which is the PS, which is just an administrative, you know, they come in and we go through a site plan process and we say you got to do X, Y, and Z. And once they do X, Y, and Z, then they get approval for opening their business in that manner. And that's the case where if they violate those standards that are in the zoning code, they're in violation of zoning code and we have to go through the enforcement process. And usually there's a public safety reason why you end up having to go through it to be forceful on it. If we said, we're going to allow it through conditional use permit, we amend the code to allow it through the CUP, we still use these same standards, but then each case is individually dealt with based on the unique circumstances and we apply reasonable conditions through a conditional use permit process. So then we go through a planning commission public hearing and a council approval of the CUP process, it gets recorded on the property and if they're violation, we revoke the CUP, so it's not necessarily a zoning violation, it's you're in violation of the conditions of the CUP.
So if you have the standards and they look and say, hey, we need to put this in and just due to our lot, there's no way for us to meet the standards, could they go to a conditional use permit then or is it?
No, then it's a variance situation.
Okay, so variance, okay.
So if their lot is uniquely situated and they've got unique circumstances that meet that variance test, then they would go through the variance. Again, it's not about the use.
Yeah.
It's more about the site design. So if we permit drive-throughs with standards and someone wants to put a drive-through in, but they can't meet those standards, then we've already said the use is permitted, we can go through the variance process because it's a design standard that they can't meet.
Now, having talked through this, I'm leaning toward the conditional use permit. I find it difficult to be in a position to penalize a business because of their success.
But a conditional use permit also allows you to take each project basis.
Yeah.
It's unique set of circumstances.
Yeah. So I have an example of one. Unfortunately, it's a giant. It's McDonald's, right? A never-ending money train. They outgrew their, their drive-through and we had a conditional use permit. And so they kept backing up into the local street. People coming in in the morning, it was all morning traffic. Rather than revoking the conditional use permit, McDonald's came in toward the building down, rotated it so they could get more stacking distance on their site. But our avenue was, we're going to revoke your CUP because you're violation of the condition which says all of your stacking must stay on your property. And they were backing up into the street. So it was a simple enforcement function there. If it's a zoning enforcement, then it's all of a sudden you got to, it's more of a track record to figure out, you know, are they in fact violating the zoning ordinance? You got to catch them in the act and it just, it just becomes more complicated than if if you have a CUP where, you know, you're not meeting your conditions. We have this permit and we can revoke it. I'm not saying that it can't be done, it can be done. Certainly, the more economic development, business-friendly approach is not CUP, because it's an additional process, it's subjective, they don't know what they're going to, you know, what kind of conditions are going to get put onto it. It's also an administrative, you know, task you got to, you should go through and annually review them or periodically review them to make sure conditions are being met. But it is a better mechanism when it comes to having problems on the site in their, out of compliance with their CUP. So there's pros and cons to it. We can, we can go through the zoning process, and that's literally just changing the letters from CUP to PS or PS to CUP. But it seems that we need to establish a little more direction on the conditions, and we need to look at its application in the RS and the C1 district. And the question about whether it's a CUP or permitted with standards is something we can continue to work through. I'll talk to the city attorney about the enforcement side of it, because it's one that will want to get their opinion on the enforcement aspect of it. So if that seems like a good approach, then what we would do is we would start working on the amendment, and we would bring a public hearing at the next Planning Commission meeting to consider it, and we would address those topics, and we could probably move it pretty quickly.
So it would only be conditional use, or there would be a permitted amount, and if you can't meet that, then you would do the conditional use?
We possibly could do that. We possibly could say, you know, drive-throughs with so much capacity can be permitted with standards, anything above and beyond, you know, drive-throughs of a larger capacity would be a CUP.
I mean, because coming from, coming from purchasing a building and asking all of those questions, if you can't do it without a CUP, you kind of tie your hands up for months, you know, and going from that standpoint.
And I think the question for conversation purposes then, at the Planning Commission meeting, would be if it's a drive-through over a certain capacity, you know, yes, we're allowing them in the downtown, but if it's over a certain size and capacity, do we want that in the downtown? I think that might be the other part of the conversation.